I want to thank everybody for coming out. Is this on here? We're on, good. I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. So the first thing we're going to do before we turn it over if you have a given introduction is we're going to be drawing names out of a container. There will be five, one through five. We have one through five chairs. When we start doing the questions, we're going to go left to right and right to left. So at a random basis, we'll determine who, one, two, three, four, and five, by where they draw the numbers. So Brent, why don't you go ahead and do that if you would? So we're going to give the time over here to Mr. Osborne, the Buell Chamber of Commerce, to kind of give a welcoming, and then we'll outline what this, how this evening's going to go as far as the rules are concerned, and we will begin. Robert, it's yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Robert Osborne, and I'm proud, proud to serve as the president of the Buell Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber, I'd like to welcome you all tonight to your meet and greet of the city candidates event. It's great to see, I was going to say a lot, but a few of you to come in and, to come and support this event. I'd like to introduce Brent Ricky, he's our county commissioner, and Brad Wills, he's our accounting assessor. Thanks, guys, for helping. They do a lot for the community of Buell, so thank you for that, and then all the public service that you guys do. So if you guys would like to join me for the pledge of allegiance before we start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one that is issued under God, individual, just as for all.
Are we on, ma'am? She turned to the law. She turned? Testing, there we go. Great. I want to welcome everybody here this evening. I want to give you an idea of what we're going to be doing as far as rules are concerned. These individuals, well now, well, been seated in random order, we're going to be asking questions of them. They'll each have two minutes to be able to answer that question, but we go from left to right, and then we go from right to left as we, as we go back and forth on the questions. One refrain from speaking, except during your turn, your time to speak. Address all responses, the public, not other candidates. Do not respond to or address another candidate's response. Keep your responses to two minutes. You'll get a 30-second sign. Brent has that here. We'll see how that works this evening. We didn't really need that a week ago Tuesday, which I really, which I will. Limit any campaign signs and slogans and stuff to the outside of your ear, not necessarily appear on stage. And feel free to linger with individuals after the event this evening. Given the number of folks that we have in the room, it might be wise for us this evening. We were not able to do that on Tuesday night because we had such a large crowd, and it was, would have been a little bit unruly, I think. But we might have to be in some time for questions. So if you have any questions at the end of this evening, it might be, might be a good idea to give you that opportunity. If we do that, and I think we probably will, we'll need to make sure we use the microphone. So that means you would need to come up here to the front and use the microphone, but this is being recorded so we can capture that. So do any of the candidates have any questions? Some questions, Rob?
Let me clarify on the clock. So last time, I have a sign there, it was a 30-second sign, but what I found is when I did that, a person lost their chain of, their train of thought. So I'm not going to do that. The clock's real obvious. If we're down to 10 seconds and you don't seem to be winding down, then I'll stand up and get your attention.
That's what the clock looks like right there.
But just, I'm not giving the 30 seconds. You lose your train. And you're left my way, your right?
We're going to start here, we're going to go across, and we'll, we'll make sure that this, please have you pass it back and forth, we don't want the name plays on, but we have to be careful with that. Why are you running for the Buell School Board? And what specific skills or experiences do you have that would make you an effective school board in Edinburgh? And anytime you want to have this question repeated, please say, I'd like to hear it again. Then clear Dave. Good. It's yours.
Okay, my name's David Klug. I'm running for the school board because I care about the students, the teachers, the staff, and the community. I've lived here for 43 years and have been working in this community for several, several years as well. I've been a business manager for 13 years with the Buell School District. I worked with the superintendents to create a budget that fits the district's needs. I've worked with the federal programs director, the maintenance department, the food service, the IT department, and the CTE programs, which is career technical education programs. I feel that I would be a great asset to the school district because of my financial and business background in the schools that we serve.
Hello, my name is Jenny Britley from Zone 5, and you will not see my name on a ballot as I am running uncontested, but I still appreciate the opportunity to participate tonight. I chose to run again because I have provided and continue to provide valuable input as the school board trustee. When I ran four years ago, I had attended a school board meeting a few years before that, that was packed because it was controversial. And I ended up sitting towards the front of the room, and it was standing room only, and I knew people had been leaving during the meeting, but it was a late meeting, I think it was after 10 o'clock, and they were going through the policies, and I got up to leave, and there were maybe 10 people left in the audience. And it really struck me because I thought, this is the boring stuff, but we should show up all the time, not just when there's something controversial, controversial going on, or when we're upset or frustrated with something going on in our district. And so I think to be truly involved, we need to be active all the time in what our leadership is doing. And there's no better way to be active and involved than to be part of that leadership. And then I'll be honest, as many of us have seen some of the controversies and stuff going on in Buell lately, especially on social media, the week before the candidacy, petition for candidacy was due, I wasn't sure if I was going to run again because I had seen a social media post with inaccurate information about the school board meeting that had happened that week. And it's, it's very frustrating when people, I like that they're able to put their thoughts out on social media, but I also want them to do it in an educated manner, and so they need to have that avenue to do that. So I want to continue to be able to help provide that avenue. I also have an accounting background. I worked for a local hospital for 20-plus years, and so I believe that my analytical thinking and accounting background provides a unique skill set, and I can understand and ask questions and provide these feedback into the district's financials.
Do you need the question repeated?
I'm good.
Okay.
Good evening, guys. My name's JD Cool, I'm running for Zone 2, and thank you everyone for coming out tonight, and, you know, our county officials for lottery, and this time other busy schedules to come lottery, and all the candidates for stepping up. This is a great group of people, and so I just wanted to thank all of you. I wanted to run for the school board. I was appointed back in 2021 and filled a two-year term, and it was during a very difficult time in history, I was just saying. And so I feel like I gained a lot of experience from that. There was Melissa Kipas, who is chairman of the board, who expressed some interest in running for that seat, and I supported her, and I thought she, she did a great job, and I stepped away from for a while, but I think public service is just something that is, that fills my cup. And this community has been part of my family for four generations now. I love this school district. I graduated from Buell High School, went on, it served me well, went on, got a college degree, retiring out of the Marine Corps, reserves this year after 21 years of service, and I did that, being active. And, you know, as an infantry officer in the Marine Corps, especially in combat, I had to make a lot of difficult decisions, and they weren't, it was choosing between bad and worse a lot of times. And so I think those experiences and my previous experience on the board, and just growing up in this community, kind of knowing what this community is all about, hopefully if I'm elected, will serve this school district well, because I do think we have some tough times coming up with the changes in public funding as it pertains to public education. And so that's why I wanted to step up and, and give it another go.
Well, I am Alisa Atkinson, and I'm also grateful for this opportunity to come out here tonight. I want to thank the chamber and all those who participated to make this happen. My husband Zach and I moved to Buell 10 years ago. We both grew up in Idaho, but he works right over power, and he was transferred to the shop in Hickman, and we decided we would just come drive through the different towns and try to figure out where we wanted to live. It was a really cool opportunity, and after driving through Wendell and Goody, and Jerome, we came through Buell, and we drove down Broadway, and there was our beautiful little library, and then just down from there is the Creamery on 9th, and then Eastman Park, and the beautiful pool were just around the corner. And then I was especially sold on Buell as I drove past our soccer builds next to the middle school, and they were packed with kids and families, and I thought, this is where I need to be. So I love this town. It's a town that takes care of their kids, and that's something that I am very passionate about. We have six children, Zach and I, ages seven to 21, and raising them has been an adventure, it has been the adventure of my life. In fact, I've learned not to say that I raised them, because the truth is, they raised me. Since our oldest one started kindergarten way back in 2009, I pursue education for my kids from almost every angle, from trying public schools, charter schools, home schools, and, and what I've learned is that no matter what school system you're in, there's always going to be good, and there's always going to be bad. And I've learned that Buell has a awful lot of good to offer, and I would love to support that good. My dad has always said that leadership is about service, and that is why I'm running, to serve our students, support our teachers, and strengthen the connections between our schools and our community. Over the last 10 years, I've served in Buell as a Cub Scout master, as Cub Scout den wager. I've co-founded Tribe, the PTO that works at their elementary school. I've organized and hosted the annual color run and the riding rally, and I've mentored the robotics team and helped lead the Yes For Buell levy team. Sorry, I came with my notes, I've been so jittery all week, I thought I'd better have them read me a trouble. I also run a small dog breeding business that are working towards becoming a licensed mental health counselor.
I'm Cody Gillen, and I'm running for Zone 2. I, part of the reason I'm running is because I was asked to, from several folks around in town, and, and the biggest reasons for me to actually kind of accept their, their pushing was, well, first of all, I have five kids, four of which are, are in the Buell School District and across different schools, and, and I am personally passionate about education and learning. That was really submitted into me in my university studies, and then also, you know, the last 16 years I've been in, in the tech world, running, starting, growing companies, and, and as CRO, chief revenue officer, and at a few different companies, and my focus has been on generating funds for corporate businesses, right? And, you know, lifting where you stand is a really important thing to me and to my family, and it's been still in me from a young age. And so I'm a big believer in doing what you can where you're at. And so I, my, my family and I, we, we have, you know, everyone calls it the antler place here in town, bona fide antlers, and I transitioned out of tech and went into, and went into a pet, and it's been just absolutely phenomenal. So we, we, we love this town. All of our children and all kinds of activities, and they're, and all kinds of different organizations, everything from robotics to, to, you know, all different sports and other, and music, and, and one thing that, that's, that we really care about is, is, you know, keeping the small town values alive, and that's one, that's one reason why we're here, and, well, why I feel like I probably helped out a little bit, so.
Hang on to the microphone, because you're going to get this first, okay? This is an action question. Can you share an example of a time when you considered all sides of an issue and differing opinions and, let's see here, differing opinions of a group before making a decision? Let me try that one more time. And you share the time when you considered all sides and issues of differing opinions of a group before making a decision? Do you need a third time? Okay, great, it's all yours.
Yeah, obviously in the business world, when we're growing and there's a lot of different avenues you can take, there's a lot of differing opinions. So I currently sit on, I'm an advisor to two other boards, and I've been on a few others before as well, and it's the same thing across every board I've been a part of, which is part of, part of the skills I feel like I could actually, you know, translate over into, into the school board here. There's always big risks and big rewards with, you know, different, different channels of, of where we're going to go. So a quick example, I guess, would be, you know, one of my last companies, we had a board meeting where we were deciding between using a new round of, of investment to expand the company really quickly, or to double down and dive into expanding our product line. So either growing or focusing on, on better product. We ended up, there couldn't, we couldn't come to a conclusion, so I led the team, the executive team, going to an offsite. We went on an offsite for two days, everyone spoke their piece, and they also had all their, all the information as well. So I'm a big proponent of transparency in communication with any issue or topic that has to be decided upon, and using a collaborative approach to ensure that we have all points covered in order to know everything that we need to know about making a data-driven decision. On top of a qualitative decision when it comes to what, in this example was, what do our customers want, and what does our team want, or our company of 2,000 employees? Like, what do they want to have happen, where they want the product and the company to go? So, you know, after, after discussing for, for two days, we came to a confluence of kind of both of those pieces, using all the data, information, and actually internal communication, and, and understanding what the people wanted, right? And we made a decision, and we rocked and rolled, and it was, it was a good experience.
Well, in all honesty, this question was hard for me. I've never run a high-end tech business, I've never been on a board before, this is my first opportunity to do that. But I truly believe that listening to all sides of an argument is something that I excel in. In fact, I was trying to think of a time when there was a major disagreement in any of the organizations, or service groups, or clubs that I've been a part of, and I couldn't think of one. I truly believe that when you communicate with each other, and you communicate everything, then there, you usually are able to come to a consensus. It's more about mediation than it is about conclusions. I'm also grateful to have been a mom of six kids. That was, that there's always opportunity there to look at all sides of an issue and come together. In fact, one story that did come to mind is that when my husband and I were, were young and we wanted to help our family bond, we decided that we would, we would host a family activity once a month, and we gave our four little kids $40, which was not a very big budget, but we were poor back then, and we told them they had to come up with a family activity. And I loved watching them collaborate and come together and make their calculations, but I realized right away we were in trouble. They all had strong opinions about what they thought should happen, and it didn't take very long, though, before they came to a conclusion. And I was so grateful that I hadn't stepped in to make the decision for them, and then I let them talk it out and played the role of the mediator. And so that's something that I really feel like I can bring to the school board. I love working with people, love it. And schools are businesses of people. You know, we look at it like a factory, and we're putting out children, and that requires so much work, and so we have to be able to work with people. We can't just expect everything to operate like machinery. I truly believe that communication is what we're lacking in our district, and that's a key thing that I can help bring to it.
A few years ago, I was appointed chairman for a subcommittee for the school district, and we looked at all of our extracurricular and policies, drug testing policies, and as chairman, it was my duty to go, you know, gather all the information, get people to participate in that. So we got different parents, coaches, administrators, students, not just from sports, but, you know, drama, ban, all the extracurriculars. And after gathering all this information, going into our first meeting, you know, I kind of thought, I know what this needs to look like, you know, because everybody was kind of frustrated with the old policies, and, you know, parents, kids, teachers were frustrated, and we just needed something better. And so I went into it after gathering all that information, thinking that I knew what it should look like, you know, and after meeting once or twice a month for about a year, with a lot of strong personalities in the room, it looked completely different than anything I had envisioned, and was 10 times better than anything that I could have written myself. And I think it is effective policy because it's still in place today, and it seems to be working for everybody.
I also like JD to have an example from my term on the school board, and this is an example that probably everyone in this room had an opinion about. It was going to the four-week, four-day school week. When it was first brought to the board, it was just a few weeks before we were supposed to vote on the current calendar, and we knew that that wasn't going to give us enough time to really make an educated decision. And so we directed the superintendent to gather information, we held some open houses to answer questions. Anytime I was out in the community, I was trying to see if people had an opinion about it, and it really wasn't an easy decision, and the, the decision still ended, the vote still ended up being split, but we were able to collaborate collectively and come to a decision that was not argumentative. Everyone was respectful, listened to all sides, and took in all of the information that we had gathered from other school districts, from people in the community, not just staff, but students, community members, and tried to see all sides of that. And I just, I think that no matter who fills either two seats, that we can continue to communicate in professional, productive manners like we were able to in that situation. And then just kind of a personal example, my kids, one of their coaches, he always said that if we had a question for him about coaching, about what was happening, how much playing time our student was getting, that he would not sit down with just us, that our student had to also be there. And so I think that's a good example of bringing everyone to the table so that you're not bringing one person saying one thing and another person saying another thing, and by the time it gets from one person to another, it gets translated. And that may not be the intention, but that is what ends up happening sometimes, so bringing all parties to the table.
In my experience on this, I have several, actually, but the easiest one to explain is, I'm on the Buell Housing Committee, I'm also board chair, and as government works, HUD Housing is changing the way they're doing the housing for Buell Housing into a Rad program. We brought all the tenants in and the board members to decide this, and we have had approximately two years to make this decision, and we've all agreed, after bringing all of it, people together with the costs and the valuation of the facilities, and talking to the tenants, all of, everybody agreed to move that direction. So that is one item. The other items that I've done is, actually pertains to the school, a lot of it has to do with my business management background. I had board members that we had discussions on different things for budgetary items to take care of and change. The other items was just teachers and students and different things that they need in the classrooms that we would have to get together and agree on how that was going to be funded. That's my experience.
Thank you. Question number three. How would you handle disagreements with other board members or the public?
I believe that there will always be disagreements between, with board members and the public. Everybody has an opinion and ideas of how things should be. I think that if you can get the correct information and, and the, the correct information and the ideas that you want to put together and talk to them and do it respectfully, I think you can get a lot more accomplishment.
I think that the disagreements are typically a lack of communication, and people can disagree, but you can disagree respectfully and communicate, and the most important part of communicating is listening, really listening to what people's concerns are. And I think that especially where the school district is concerned, we all have a common goal, and we want to see our students succeed. And so if you take that common goal and learn to communicate better, and to listen better, and to educate better, then we can maybe disagree, but still agree to disagree, so to speak. I've also tried as a trustee, remembering that I represent my constituents. I have my own experiences to draw from, but if my constituents, people in the community don't share their experiences with me, then I only have my own experiences to draw from. And so I always encourage people to reach out, share their thoughts, share their concerns, and I think that when you do that, you can come to a common understanding and be on the same page at the end of the day.
I think disagreements between board members is healthy because everybody gets the same vote, their vote counts the same, you know, so you have a debate, you vote, and you move on. That's what we're there to do, is discuss those issues and disagree, and try to see all sides before we vote. And my vote, if elected, is not going to count any different than the other four board members', and so you do that, and you move on, because I think everybody that serves on a school board has the same interest and the same goal, and that's to educate our kids and provide our kids a healthy, great education here in Buell. When it comes to members of the public, that can be a little bit tricky at times because it's what they care most about, it's what they're passionate about. You're talking about their kids or their grandkids. So I think as a trustee, you have to show a little bit of humility and grace and allow them that time to vent and get what's hurting them off their chest, because that's what they care about, and that's what's important to them. And then you have an honest conversation with them, and as long as you speak with integrity and from the heart, and show a little bit of humility and try to see their side of things, I think it can be a productive conversation even if they're coming in angry or hostile. I've experienced quite a few of those, and they ended up in sometimes friendships after we've had these conversations with people that I didn't know before, you know? So I think you can take a negative and turn it into a positive as long as you show a little bit of humility and a little bit of grace towards our fellow human.
Well, years ago, many, many years ago, as you can probably see from the gray hair, gray hairs on my head, I was in high school, and you all may not know it, but Idaho has a thriving debate program here in Idaho. From October through March, there are hundreds of students that gather together at high schools and colleges around the state, and they prepare arguments, and they debate for hours and hours every weekend, and I was a part of that group. I, I qualify, I think I carried the qualification of nerd as a rather, as a badge of honor, I guess. But this, this opportunity to debate every weekend was really unique because you would prepare your arguments, spend hundreds of hours on them, and then, and then you would get to the tournament, and you wouldn't even know which side you were going to argue, and then you would have to switch it and argue again. Sorry, I'm getting the symbol that my mic isn't working, anybody? Yeah, right there. Okay, thank you. Anyway, this opportunity taught me some really valuable lessons, and I have to give credit back to my incredible debate coach, Miss Laura Hansen, for helping me to understand that there are always two sides of an argument, and that taking the opportunity to look at it from the other perspective is extremely valuable. But she also taught me how to disagree without being disagreeable. In fact, the whole nature of the debate program was such that you go and you walk into a room, and you have heated a tense debate, and then you walk out and go have And then you walk out and go have pizza with your best friends. And I love that. That's the spirit that I'd like to bring to the board. I'm not afraid of disagreement, honest conversation is how we make good decisions. I am willing to ask hard questions and stand by my values, but I'll always be respectful. I believe you can hold people to a high standard and still treat them with dignity at the same time.
If I was not encouraging people in my organization, in my, with my experience, to find out what was wrong or to bring up ideas that were, maybe we're in juxtaposition of where we're going or, or weren't just on the boat per se, right? If I wasn't encouraging my team to do that, then I felt like we were a runless organization. So as long as, and I'll, I'll echo what Alyssa just said, as long as, as, as everyone is treated with dignity and respect, that is something that I highly encourage because no one is smart enough to have all the answers and to have everything all drawn out perfectly every single time for every single question. So a big proponent of collaboration, especially in the community and those that are, those that have vested interests in the progress of, 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 you know, all the students here in our district. And so the key part is, is ensuring that, that those that are, are coming to the table in opposition to maybe something that's going through, a lot of that can be mediated beforehand by ensuring that we're, that those board members are actually doing a great job in oversimplifying and over clarifying all the, all the data and information that's actually the basis of their decision-making process as well. So that hopefully beforehand, before there's even an issue, we can actually get, you know, everyone on account of the same vote to ensure that we're all doing exactly what we want to do, which is to ensure the success and the, and the constant never-ending improvement of all of our, all of our students, our kids here in the district. So I highly encourage it, I've always encouraged it. Because, you know, being a leader in an organization, if you, if you're hearing crickets all the time, that's when I got my spidey sense that something was up. And I needed to go and kind of prod some folks to start poking around and asking questions.
Question number four, what priorities do you have in mind for the Buell School District and the local students?
Yeah, obviously being a little, my, all my metaphors and examples are about business and operations. But my mind first went to, I went through all the financials for the last couple of years that are posted online on the school district. And there's two things that kind of stuck out to me is, one, all the reports that I can see, all the data that was out there of how our students are faring compared to both, not just nationally, but also, also the other school districts here in the state. And how almost across the board, our students are struggling to be average. And as I mentioned earlier, I am a huge proponent of education and constant never-ending learning, never-ending mentality of learning. And I would just love to push on making, ensuring that we, that all of our educators have the resources that they need. So that's kind of point two is, is making sure that we have enough funding and that we find new, you know, discover new channels of funding to actually help support our organization here in our school district. Whether that be through, you know, outreach programs within the community of other, and surrounding community of other businesses and, and working with their HR organizations to see what funding that they can actually have up for grabs that is just kind of sitting there, that we can literally help support our students with better programs, better technology, better access to, to greater materials. And also for our educators as well and helping to support them as well. And both with their compensation, but also just, just ensuring that the, the school district of Buell is, becomes a place that, you know, we are able to hire the best and the brightest and that we become a magnet for all the greatest teachers out there. And part of what you do is resources need to be increased at their disposal for better assets and, and to help drive up the educational experience of our kids.
All right, well, honestly, I think every one of us is going to say, I care about students. And so I've spent a lot of time trying to study out what that actually means for me as a parent who's been participating in our school district for years and I've watched my children go through that, the different programs that we have. For me, it starts, it begins and it ends with great teachers. I think of teachers like doctors. The more experience they have, the better. We need to keep our great teachers. We need to identify the ones that are struggling and give them the support that they need. And we need to never treat them like replaceable. I want to give credit to the current school board for taking some big steps in the last few years. I don't know if everybody's aware, but our school district has had some major changes. The first thing that they've done is they've helped move our teachers onto a this state pay letter, which wasn't happening in Buell a few, several years ago. The second thing they've done is to help align our calendar with the neighboring districts. And that made us more competitive in the teaching market as well. And the third thing that they've done is to help create a classified schedule for our administrators and support staff so that we can show them they're supported. These changes have made us more competitive in the teacher market and they showed real commitment to our staff. From here, we need to keep building a culture, a culture that attracts good teachers. But in a time when nationally we're still experiencing teacher shortages, I also think that we need to get creative, we need to create systems that can help us continually network and recruit good teachers. This is where I think more community involvement could help. My second priority is to spend less time on screens and more time making real connections for our children. Technology has its place, but no tablet can replace a good teacher, a class discussion or real conversation. Too much screen time is hurting our kids. And finally, I think that we need more community connection than communication. When families, teachers and districts are truly connected, everything else works better. And that's why I'm excited to dig into the idea of building a community connections committee for our school. This would be a revolving group of parents and staff and community members that communicate regularly and help our school stay responsive to the needs and the values of our community. So in a nutshell, great teachers, limit screen time and strengthen communication.
Those were two pretty good answers. I don't know if I can top that. No, it's a lot of the same. Right now in this school district, we're, we're short-staffed teachers and classified staff. And it's no secret. And it's not just unique to Buell, it's in all the rural communities in Idaho and across the nation. And so what, what are we going to do to set ourselves apart from those other rural communities in Idaho and recruit and retain great teachers and great staff, support staff? So, yeah, I think that needs to be a collaborative effort. We need to give our administrators the tools to do that. But then if it's not working, we have to have those honest, hard conversations and look in the mirror and say, what are we doing wrong? What can we do better? Because it affects our kids in the classroom, it affects our teachers. If they're trying, expected to do two or three jobs and are spread thin, it wears on the person over time. And so, you know, that's one way of not just monetarily supporting our teachers, but supporting our teachers in giving them a specific task and purpose so they can fully achieve their mission and that'll help our students. So that would be the first priority and that's something that we can tackle right away. The, the second thing that I think we need to look at, and Cody touched on it, is the revenue stream. You know, education is being funded wildly different than it has previously. And what are we going to do about it? So we can't just, you know, stick our head in the sand and say, it'll be okay. It probably was not going to be if we're not proactive as a district. Have a long-term strategic plan to look at different revenue streams and look at the revenue streams that we have coming in and having a long-term financial outlook for the school district.
I think that as a current board member, the priority that's at the top of my mind right now is making sure that we fill that high school principal position for the next school year. It's, it was kind of touched on, but it puts strain on our staff to not have that position filled. And it's not the best way that we can serve our students. And so we may have to think outside the box in ways to get some applicants here that share the values of the Buell community, but also bring fresh ideas to our district. It's kind of going to be repetitive probably with Dave as well. But we, we want to see our students grow. No matter what academic level they come in at or what background they come from, they, we should be able to help them grow and learn from whatever starting point that they're at. We, a good way to address that is through staffing. And JD touched on that and that becomes a difficult thing. And getting all of those positions filled and making sure that we just have enough people. And so we need to continue to address areas in the budget that may not be necessary so that we have funds available in other areas like staffing. Staff retention, this was touched on too, the staff retention is important to me. Every time a new person comes in, they have to learn Buell and that may not be the best service to our students. If we don't have someone that's the right fit, that's okay too. But let's focus on retaining those that are a good fit and are growing within our district. Because not only do the students need to grow, but the staff needs to grow as well. I also think that we need to provide some opportunities for our advanced students. It's a concern when they're on the bottom end, but sometimes those advanced students get forgotten.
Well, in the years that I've served for business manager in Buell School District, when I first started, there was a lack of funding at that time. The state come through with money as, as it moved through. And then of course, COVID hit. And we had all sorts of money because all federal money. Now that's all gone and the state has cut the funds for the district, which, which does make it very stressful for everybody involved, the board, the teachers. And recognize it or not, the students really do know what's going on. I believe that we should at least try and get the resources to do a proper education for students. And the board, I would say the board does not make decisions unless it's for the best of students to get that education. I also would like to see more recent sources in the, in the rooms for the teachers to be able to educate the students. I think that's, that's probably the best. And retaining teachers that are exceptional teachers is real important.
The fifth question this evening, how do you plan on communicating with the citizens of Buell?
Well, my communications kind of, you can call me on the telephone, you can email me, and that's pretty much it. I'm not a fan of being online. So, and I'll answer any questions you have to the best of my ability.
I think we all talk a lot about communication and for whatever reason, that does seem to be a challenge. And I think that first and foremost, we should all be open to learning every single day. Whether it's a board member, a community member, it kind of goes back to listening to all sides and just that respectful, open communication. We have, as a board, the last few years tried to come up with new ways to communicate by pushing out a little bit more on social media. We've had, we had the levy committee, so some focused committees. There are several gaps because we realized that there are a lot of people in Buell that do not rely on social media. And that is something that I think that we honestly need some help with. We, I do think that a couple of ideas I have is we can improve navigation on our website. You know, I've heard that comment a lot. I tried to go find this, but I didn't see it anywhere. Getting more involvement from parents from our diverse student population. For example, the English language learners. That becomes a challenge to get those parents to show up and be involved, but they're just as important to hear their voice as everyone else is. Maybe creating some tutorials on how the board operates, how you can provide communication to the board and provide your thoughts and opinions. And then education on school funding, it is not simple. And then being present in our community and open to discussion and questions. We all should be, no matter who's on the board, should be open to discussion and questions anytime. And then maybe a paperman, either a mailer, which does get expensive, but we're even just having a flyer available to businesses. You still have the cost of paper, but we know that there's, you know, examples like the Senior Center, Buell Family Network or other local businesses. Or maybe we can try to get some more information out to the community.
Call me old school, but I don't think anything beats a good one-on-one conversation with folks. Previously, when I was on the board, we had our emails and I tried to, you know, write out thoughtful emails when we go back and forth. And I think there was just a lot missed in those emails. And finally, I was busy one time, I, I just said, hey, give me a call to this person. And we had a great conversation. And then probably a lot of you know Pat Manpatton, math teacher here in retired. She would grill me all the time. She'd email me, you know, I heard this in the faculty room and that. Pat was a really great math teacher because she'd make me show my work, you know? So I, I couldn't just give her the answer. She had to, I had to show her the policy or the Idaho code and that. And we had a lot of great conversations and she could take that information back to the faculty room and say, hey, this is, this is what's going on, this is why the board voted this way. And I, I don't know how many times, you know, just being present out at sporting events, different organizations that I'm part of where people just ask me questions. Hey, you know, I've been meaning to call you, but I've been busy. Or I've been meaning to email you, I've been busy. I got this question for you. And that, I mean, we're a small town, we all know each other. And if we don't know each other, we probably should. So I think just being present and open to conversation and actually listening to people is the best form of communication. And, and quiz me, if I get elected, quiz me. I, I love digging into the Idaho code and the policies and all that stuff. It'll make me a better board member and, and make me show my work like Pat Manpatton.
I love Pat Manpatton too. She's a fantastic lady. All right, before I explain how I want to improve communication with the citizens of Buell, I want to recognize what we're already doing really well. Our district has an active website and social media presence. They post regular updates and they share Facebook Live broadcasts of our school board meetings. We also have a page on our website dedicated specifically to transparency. Clearly, our district is working hard to keep people informed. But I've noticed two significant challenges. First, you have to already be following those channels to know where to find this information. And second, much of what is being shared happens because we have good people making a good effort, not because it's built into our policy. That's where I'd like to help. I think we're ready to take the next steps in communication and transparency. And I think I have the leadership skills and the communication skills to help us make those steps. We all miss the Buell Herald and the connection gave our town. But I think there's a simple solution, an emailed monthly newsletter from our school district available to subscribers through email and also available in print like places like the Senior Center, the library and local restaurants, as mentioned earlier. I would, this, or this monthly update would, this monthly newsletter would help us with key updates, important board highlights and upcoming events. When information is easy to find, our community stays more connected and informed. My second suggestion is to have something, is something that I have mentioned in one of my previous, in one of the previous questions. I would like us to explore the creation of a community connections committee so that we can find those gaps and fill them. The third suggestion is that I think we need to make the recording and archiving of all of our school board meetings official and policy. Right now, we record them as a good big effort towards transparency, but it's not yet required. I'd like to see us lock that in so the public always has clear, easy access to what's discussed at our board meetings. Finally, I'd like to make our financials easy enough so that everyone can understand them. And so I propose that we, that we create a clear, visual, easy-to-read budget summary so that anyone can understand where it all goes and publish that annually.
Communication is something that I've, in collaboration, communication, something I've actually been forced into learning a lot about over the last basically decade with, you know, having global organizations, global customer base. I could sit here and guess, you know, what would be the best way to, whether it was, we could start a newspaper or we could, or we could, you know, drop books off of the, the meetings that happen every, every month at everyone's doorstep. There's a lot of things that we could do, but the fact of the matter is, is that the, the, the way that people want to consume content is actually different. And there's a lot of simple, very simple things that we can do. There's some very cheap and expensive and with being a school district, we could probably even get these apps for free that literally give people, give us... apps for free that literally give people, give us, the board, the ability to make one post or one message and it can literally go to every single platform, including text message, including email, including, you know, there's, this isn't just one app, there's a lot of different apps that do this and so just implementing something like that, a little plugin, that one post and it goes to Facebook, you know, Instagram, TikTok, whatever, you know, wherever people are consuming content and want to see information and messages from the school board or what's going on in the district, like it's, there's a very simple, there's very simple solutions that we can do then. To get it, and then basically, like, the reason I was saying, like, I could try guessing, I don't, I don't like to guess. I would like to have information. So we can have ways for people to subscribe to, whether it was that they want the email, then they can subscribe to email or multiple different ways they can subscribe to, you know, getting text message updates, you know, once a month when something changes, or they want to see it in their Instagram feed, right? So whatever that may be, there's simple plugins that we could do to knock that out. And then to get more involvement at the meetings, I'm a big fan of food, so maybe we can start doing a potluck of cookies or something like that to get more input.
I'm gonna throw a curve at you.
Let's go.
You know that the next question is, you have two minutes to wrap up, but I'm gonna ask you a question before that. This is a question that actually was brought forth last week and we weren't able to answer it because we had, we had so many more people involved, but the question is, I'm gonna give you just a few seconds to think about it before you have to answer. Who has been the most influential person in your life and how will that affect your decisions on the Buell School Board? Take your time, you're fine.
Good question. I've been fortunate to have some really good role models, both personality and education and some really great bosses that achieved crazy things and then really awesome family members that have really instilled core principles and values of, you know, focus on the family and on raising good kids and doing your best. It'd have to be someone really, really dear to me, his name's Kevin Pearson, he's a really great leader of mine and he's one of the most patient people I've ever met and that's not innately natural for me and, but he taught me that, he taught me the importance of patience and the importance of, one of the things that he did teach me, and this is a very, very well-educated person, Ivy League, he's Fortune 500 company, you know, president, CEO, he's very, his credentials are just insane, very smart guy and one thing that he told me is you can learn something from every conversation with every person on this planet and it's your job to, to learn from those in which you communicate with. And so that really hit me and that was about 20 years ago and that's been something I've tried to emulate throughout my life is every communication, every interaction with somebody, I seek to learn from them and how we can have better understanding together from different points of view and how we can actually have better information to make better decisions. So for me, that would be, that's kind of a cornerstone to like what I've done in my career and it's really served me well and what I would, you know, it's important to me to continue to do for the rest of my life, especially, you know, here in the district. There's a lot that we can learn and there's a lot that we can also collaborate on going forward.
Well, like Cody, this is a hard question to answer with just one person. I talked a little bit about my amazing debate coach, who had a huge impact on my life and I think about so many people in this community who have blessed my life and the lives of my children, but if I had to pick one person, the person that's in my head all the time, it's my sweet and amazing mother. She was a first grade teacher for over 20 years and she taught me some really interesting things. She taught me to love people where they're at and I watched her one day on a playground with a little boy who was trying to get attention and wanted to disrupt a game and my mom was the kind of a teacher that was extraordinary. Everything she did was fun. She went out with her kids to recess every day so that she could teach them to play well together and during this particular day, she was playing tetherball with a little boy and he continued to want to disrupt the game and I watched her, I watched her tell him, this is your last chance, you have one more chance to participate in the right way and he chose not to participate and so she put him in timeout and he had to sit out for a minute, but then, and this was the key part, the minute that timeout was over, she walked over to him, she gave him a big old hug and she said, are you ready to try again? And I was amazed that this little boy came back with a different approach completely. That was my mother's approach. You, it's okay to hold the line, it's okay to have boundaries, it's okay to set, set your standards and stick to them, but you always reach back out with love to the people who are, who are struggling because they, and you showed them the way. My good father-in-law also taught me another principle and this was to do with training courses and he always said, make what's right, what you want them to do easy and make what's wrong, what you don't want them to do difficult. And I found that applies in so many different areas of my life, whether it's dog training or children raising or relationships and I'm grateful for these good people that have taught me so much.
Yeah, tough question, but I think a person that has really influenced my life is Colonel Lance A. He was my company commander right before my first deployment to Sangin and it was, it was summer 2011 and it was, it's in Helmand Province and the Secretary of Defense called it the deadliest place in the world at the time. And I was a young lieutenant and I was wound tighter than a drum, hard charger and I'd come over from a different battalion to go on this deployment and the company commander I had previous was too much like me and it just, it wasn't a good situation and Lance was six, seven, I don't know how, I mean, he looked like an NFL, you know, tight end. He played basketball at the Naval Academy, but he was just so calm and listened and he could have, you know, been a hard charger and got on me and then, you know, really pushed me even further, but he really helped me in my development in just saying, hey, we're going into a hard situation, we're doing this, like, let's take a breather, let's have a laugh, let's talk about some things, you know, and just, just being a great guy and, and taking the time to, to really listen to me and what was going on with me and because, because we were all scared, we weren't gonna admit it, you know, because we're Marines, we're not gonna, you know, say that, going fighting in a minefield is scary, we can't do that, you know, but he just showed me a lot about humility from a person that didn't have to and so showing that humility and grace towards your fellow man, you know, that I think that's really served me well in my life.
This is actually kind of an easy question for me and I'm gonna say my daughter Brianna and many of you know her, but I have twins that were born three months early and from the moment that she was born, doctors said she would not survive and she's continued to defy all odds. They said she'd never walk or talk, but that little girl has, I say little, she's now 18, but she has more determination than anybody I know in this world. She challenges me and frustrates me and makes me smile every single day and she, she just really shows you how to be a good person because she doesn't see the differences in people. She doesn't know a stranger, she'll walk up and give random people a hug, which we had to work on because some people really don't like to just be approached in the grocery store with a hug. She has a very different sense of the other world, whatever you believe, heaven, whatever you believe in. So she just really helps ground me and keep me in touch with what's important in life. Sorry, I'm not a crier, but she, I love all my kids, of course I do, but she just, if you've met her, you probably can see, you understand what I'm saying about the light that she just brings, even with her challenges and sometimes it's difficult for her to communicate and to regulate her emotion, but she just is who she is unapologetically and it just really gives me a different perspective on life and people.
This one really made me think. I had a lot of people influence how outcome happened, you know, through my lifetime and how I changed the whole way I think. Probably the one that helped me the most and driving me to accomplish things is my wife. She's in education, she taught me how to learn and do things that I normally wouldn't try. I'm really a recluse and this is like real uncomfortable for me, so I'm trying to come out of the shell as much as I can, so that's, that's about it.
Okay, so you know the sixth question because you've already had that before you got here tonight. Please take two minutes and share any thoughts or things you would like the public to know about you and who you are, what you bring to the table.
Well, it's in the, the thing that I bring to the table is I have a large amount of experience in school operations and school finance. I was Business Manager for 13 years and I've seen a lot of change in the district on both ends, lots of funding, no funding, and I just think it's gonna happen a lot. It'll probably happen a lot more with less funding than now. If we can get the public involved a little bit more, I believe they, they can help, the community can help the schools achieve a lot. You know, that's, that's really part of the stance here that I have to see is I think that the public needs to be involved. We didn't hardly have any funds from the local community at all in any of the budgets that I ever did. Most of it was either federal funds or even state funds.
First off, I'd just like to say thanks for hosting the event, thanks to all the other candidates that are here and for everybody that came out to listen. I appreciate and I think this goes a long way in what we've talked a lot about tonight in communication. I did not grow up in Buell, but I have lived here for 10 years. I've had three children that graduated from Buell High School within the last three years and one child still at Papawell Elementary. They participated in a variety of events within the school district from sports to FFA to band, so they've seen a lot of different areas within the school district. And then, as you heard me talking about Brianna, she was part of the extended resource room from the time that we moved here in third grade until she graduated, so that's another perspective of a, of a part of our district that is a huge part, but I think that sometimes that people forget is there if you haven't needed to utilize that service. Dave mentioned it a little bit, but we, the budget, you know, the funding, one of our biggest expenditures is salaries and benefits and I think we just need to make sure we continue to be responsible stewards of the budget and try to retain staff. Some thoughts I had about retaining staff is while compensation is an important part of that, I think that we also need to allow our staff to feel safe in communicating their concerns and we need to utilize their talents and let them grow and feel like a valuable part of the team and then support new ideas that may seem outside of the box, because anybody can come with an idea that maybe none of us have thought about. And then listening, I didn't attend the city council last week, but I did listen online and, you know, they talked also a lot about community awareness and so I had the thought that we all kind of have the same communication issue and so can we come together in a way to try to help communicate instead of just each group trying to do their different, in their different areas that we could all utilize maybe some similar avenues. And last thing, just get out and vote, no matter how you vote, just get out and vote and make an informed decision. Thank you.
So for those of you that don't know me, if there's a youth sports program somewhere that needs a coach, I'm your guy. I love coaching kids. I coached wrestling, baseball, football, softball, you know, I just love being around young people and, and I want to help, you know, be part of their experience in this community growing up and be a positive role model in this community. I want to take the time to thank Cody for running, you know, I know he just moved here not too long ago and it takes a lot of courage in your community to step up and put yourself out there and I know, I don't know him well, I know he's a great guy because I coached his son Jett and he's a really good kid and that, those things don't happen if I accident. I'm looking forward to wrestling season, buddy. But what I want people to know about me above all else is I try to be a man of integrity. We can disagree, you might not like what I have to say, but I'll try to be honest and forthright in everything that I do and be a man of integrity.
All right, several years ago, I was listening to a mental health podcast, a caller called in, he was describing his life, it was terrible, he was extremely overweight, isolated and dependent on his mother. He said he wanted to change, but he didn't know where to begin. After listening for a while, the host gave a really sound piece of advice that surprised me. He said, before anything can change in your life, you have to begin by changing the way you think about yourself. That idea has always stuck with me. I truly believe that how we think about ourselves shapes how we act. If we see ourselves as generous, we become generous. If we see ourselves as honest, healthy, or capable, our choices begin to reflect that. So what do I want the public to know me, about me? It begins with the story that I tell myself. I am first and foremost a disciple of truth, whether it was years on the debate team or the time I've dedicated to studying and research and come to believe that the path, the real means of progress, comes through a sincere search for truth. That search has always led me back to my Savior, Jesus Christ, the source of all truth in life. As His disciple, I strive to act with charity, love, and love and to seek God's guidance in the decisions before me. That search for truth has also led me to become a lifelong learner, someone who reads, who asks questions and who isn't afraid of tackling hard topics with humility and courage. When I was a little girl, my dad planted fruit trees all over our property, every empty space had a fruit tree in it and it took me years to learn all the different trees. It wasn't until they began to produce fruit that I could tell an apple tree or a pear tree and I love that motto, by their fruits, you shall know them. I know we've talked a lot tonight, but I hope that Buell can recognize my fruits. I've spent hundreds of hours serving in our community and I will continue to do so. I love, I love these people, I love this community and I hope you guys can trust that I have the best interest of your students in mind and that I will work hard with them and everything.
Yeah, appreciate it, Coach. You're a great, you're a great coach. He does, he does a really great job. I, I just want to say, I'm just here to help. I feel like I have a different set of skills or a different background than, you know, a lot of different, you know, folks around here, so maybe I could come out and help it in just a different way. As I mentioned before, I'm a big proponent of just lifting where you stand. My family and I have loved being here every minute of it, we're not going anywhere and we just, we came here because we want to get back to our more rural environment like we grew up in and to bear, to raise barefooted, you know, feral children and to be with a great community and to, you know, just, just to, to really dig in and to a place where people care and that's exactly what this is and we've loved every second. So everyone's accepted us with open arms and just been so gracious and, and for me personally, I've lived in a lot of different places and, but, or came from the South and that's a really important thing for us is to always, you know, to always love your neighbor and we definitely have felt that here, you know, in the last couple of years that we've been here, so. But I have kids here, I love education and I'm a big proponent of learning and growing and, and I have a bunch of kids here and I just want to ensure that all the, all the students of Buell are able to continue to grow and learn and have a great educational experience. And I've been blessed to have a lot of those types of experiences myself and I would just love to continue to pass that forward and to look for ways to lift up the next generations. I love, you know, we love digging in with, we love going to church, we love the outdoors, we love animals, we have a ton of animals at our place, anyone needs a cutest puppy in the world, we're about to have, my wife's got all those rocking and rolling for you, so we just, we just want to, we just want to help and if I can do so, great, if not, I'll still be helping, so appreciate it.
Let's give these folks a round of applause, please. We also want to give, they're so efficient on time. We also want to give, they're so efficient on time, they've done a great job in an hour and fifteen minutes. As, or any of you have any questions for all, so if you ask a question, we have just a couple, all will answer the question. So if you would, come on down here, you might be walking down a while on the stairs. Could you be the mic stand?
Really unfair, I actually wanted to ask this question clarifying JD and Cody, you guys are running through zone two. All right, you're my crew. So my name is Marcy Scarrow, my husband and I have lived in Buell for the last five years. My husband's mother's family actually was one of the founding families of Buell, they migrated from Chicago, Illinois. They follow Mr. Buell out here. My question for you is two parts, I'm a former educator. I actually, I was a good teacher, but Idaho just now became a teacher as well. And became a licensed professional counselor, so that's now my career path. And in 24 and 25, I actually went to the state legislator, legislature to testify and advocate for the most vulnerable in our state to protect them from some things that I thought were really evil. That's not my question. My question to you two is, if you were to get elected in my zone, as a former teacher, I would have loved it if my board in the local school district would have come and worked in my classroom for two weeks. And so my question to JD and to Cody is, if you get elected, I'm going to call you and say, "Let's go to class," because I want to see you putting your boots on the ground and seeing what those teachers actually do. And the other thing, the other question is, so would you be willing to do that? The other question is, would you be willing to go to the state and say, "We need more money in our schools?" Because it's ridiculous. I got my grades every week, I was good at what I did, my kids, except for my special needs kids, they all passed the high sets in every subject. And I had to quit because it was detrimental to my 60, 70 hours a week. And I know your teachers here are doing well, and when I was researching, looking for a job, the states that had the best teachers and the highest test scores paid what?
I would actually do the, the classroom, I think I would do it, just to get the experience. It would be a challenge, definitely a challenge, depending on the subject. I'd love to go to the legislators and give them an airful. Now, they call it their constituents, but I don't know who their constituents are. Because the majority of the people that actually talk to them, I don't think they listen to. So, you know, I, I do my best to try and give more money for the schools because they are lacking in about every fund there is.
I do.
Probably going to echo what Dave said, but I would absolutely love to spend time in the classroom, not just one classroom, but even at the three different schools. I think that would be really valuable for everyone on the board. And to echo Dave, going to the state for more money, that absolutely, yes, I would do that. We, not only do we not have enough funds, but the funding formula is so complicated that sometimes you don't even know how you can, you're trying to do your budget and the statutes aren't finalized. And so you're, you're always kind of chasing that because once the statutes are published is about the same time that you, once they voted and that you need to be, know what your budget is, and it's complicated. So I think both of those things would be great to see in our district.
Thank you. 100% would love to go into the classroom. I was a company commander at the School of Infantry, one of my stops, and I would pull the students that were struggling aside and help them out so that compact instructors could just deal with everybody else. And that was probably the most fun that I had in my record career. I volunteered, last time I was on the board, Lynn, if Lynn's here, she can vouch for me, I said, "If you need a sub, I'm your guy, you can't pay me, but I'll, I'll sub if you get in a pinch." So absolutely 100% would love to go into the classroom. I coached a lot of different sports around, and I run kids a lot and, and I just love being around kids. And, and the financial part, 100%, you know, we're giving away $50 million to a private organization with no accountability, you know, that's where it needs to stop. Like this voucher thing, I think, one, is unconstitutional. Two, you know, it takes money away from public, from public schools and we're going to run a deficit as a state, which is also unconstitutional. So that, that needs to be stopped and I don't think that our local representatives right now are doing that. One of our local representatives, HB1, actually proposed $250 million a year to private schools with no, with no strings attached. And I've heard the argument that creates competition and it doesn't, because the, the kids that cost the most amount of money to educate are those with special needs. Private schools don't get to pick and choose who they, who they take. Public schools provide a good education to everybody, no matter what's, what it costs. So I will be staunchly against vouchers, I will advocate for a million dollars staying in Buell schools.
Thanks, sir.
All right, you better set the timer because this is a bit.
We'll do it right here.
All right. So I have spent hundreds of hours in our schools, I know the teachers by name and I know many of the students and I would love to go and to take that challenge, Marcy Scarrow. I also regularly like write letters to our legislator, legislature, they know me and I know them. My experience helping to lead the levy, or the nest for Buell levy campaign this spring was a really fun learning opportunity. I was able to help dive deeply into school finance and why it works and how it works, and it is complicated. I echo what, what's been said before, there is also a lot of pressure. I mean, as JD mentioned, there is a lot of pressure to pull funds from our schools, but I think that we've got to stop with the mindset of scarcity. I think we have to start believing that there is enough for everybody in our community to have what they need. I think that our community loves our kids and I think that as we communicate with them more effectively, we will be able to pass printed levies as they know and can understand themselves because we educate and teach our public, we bring transparency to them, then they'll be willing to support us, I truly believe that. I also believe that, that God shines on people who love and who care about their communities and that He's going to help them watch out for our schools. I'm a huge advocate for school choice, but I believe Idaho has school choice, it is everywhere and I am worried about the voucher program as well. But I think that Idaho is going to course correct, I don't think we're going to let that go so far down the, I don't, I don't think we're going to travel that rabbit hole so far that it hurts us. I think we're ready, I think that the things I'm following and the things that I'm reading say that we're going to be okay. What we have to do is, is get to work, it's, it's communicate with the community, it's, it's focus on our teachers, it's create opportunities for good communication, and I think that when that happens, we're going to see that the funds that we need will be available and that we'll be able to track the teachers that we need so they're not all burnt out anymore now. So, all right, my time is up, thanks.
The first question of getting into the schools in the classroom, absolutely. I'm actually surprised it's not part of the job description, so that's kind of news to me. But, yeah, absolutely, I'm, we're up at the school anyways quite often with, with my kids, so I would more than love to understand not just what they're learning, but, you know, how the performance of all the entire education system is going and learn from the mouths of those actually doing it, the boots on the ground and what's going on and how can we help? And, but also, what's going well and how can we spread that around? You know, like with our top teachers, how do we retain talent? I mean, part of it, yes, we need to look for areas in the budget that I, you know, there's areas that I think that we can definitely pull from and tweak and look into and understand, hey, do we really need this or that, or can we reallocate those funds and, or can we actually use the funds and, and other line items? But, but there's also more qualitative things too, of just putting our, our best and brightest, you know, our, our teachers up on pedestals and the ones that are really rocking it and doing really well, put, give them a voice and put them on a platform to be able to, to help assist the others, the other teachers in the same group and to be kind of the shining star and to let them know that, one, we appreciate them and, two, we, we value what they bring to the table and we want to replicate them across the, the rest of the schools, right? And so using our people in a way that lets them feel appreciated and also heard and understood. And, yeah, lobby, I think that there's more of an organization that we can, that we can actually put in place there rather than just one person going up there and beating on their door. I think that getting organized within our community to actually go after and, and make the changes needed to be made so that, you know, Buell continues to get their fair share and more so in the future. But, yeah, giant after funding as well, that's been one of my big two things, so that's definitely important to me.
Okay, one more question, okay, it's a bridge, last one.
Just want to say how interesting this has been this evening, appreciate everyone and your past work with kids now in this district, but where you come from, appreciate that. My question was sparked by something JD said, that public education is funded differently now. I've been out of the education scene for some years, my kids are older, so if you could explain that, how is it different? And the second part to that is, where could we cut expenses, waste, or could we spend less, we're always thinking about having to increase income, is there something we can do on the other side of the scale to help with the amount of money we can use in our schools? Thank you.
Yeah, great question. I think, you know, in looking through all the financials throughout the last, you know, I went back to the last three years of all the financials that I've reported every, every month, and what it left me with is, one, I think the previous, or the previous slash current board is actually doing a really good job. And there's, I can see in the data that there's actually been significant changes in reallocation of funds over the last four years. Do I think that it's perfect? No. But it left me, I'm not going to come up here and say, "Oh, I have very detailed, we can save six bucks doing it over here, we can move this over here, we can, you know, we can gain a couple more over there." What it left me with in my initial analysis that I'd like to dive into much more deeply is, it left me with more questions than answers. And, but the biggest glaring thing is that getting more funds in the bucket is, is the bigger priority because the percentage of funds that are actually spent on students in our school district of all the entire budget versus the top school districts of even the state or the, or even the surrounding states, just some of the, some of the surrounding top school districts, I went through their financials as well, are sliver that we're able to spend on our students and their, and their actual, you know, even the teachers as well, but, you know, educators, but what we can actually spend on them, the slice of the pie is much smaller than comparative slices of the pie. So growing that piece is really one thing that's clearly important for me. And coming from a revenue perspective and revenue background, there's always a way to get more money from other organizations or other, or other, you know, even, like I said before, businesses or whatever, but it's, it's really important for us to get our, our fair shake and our, our, our full slice of the pie that, that we contributed to society, we just need to make sure we're giving it back for our kids. And I had an example, but.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to echo a lot of what Cody said, that is some valuable, sound advice. As a part of the helping our school district pass the levy this last spring, I also spent some time digging into school financials and I know that I am very, very uneducated compared to several of the people on this, in this subject, I mean, on, on this, this panel. We have some really fantastic accountants and business managers over there that probably understand it much more deeply than I do. But what I did notice is that, that our district receives far less funds from our local community than almost any other district in the state. I looked at comparables for American Falls, I looked at comparables for the other schools in the valley, and dollar for dollar, we just are not receiving those funds. And I've also followed the process of the, the different levies that we've tried to pass, there's three different ways you can do levies for anybody out there who's like, "What are they talking about?" And levies are on, there's three different ways you can get your local community to bring money in. You can do a bond, that has to be for a building, you can do a planned facilities levy and that is supposed to be to cover like building maintenance, or you can do a supplemental levy, and most districts have all three, and our district has had zero. And, and I think that's just, part of it happened because we had so many transitions in leadership over the last few years. There were levies, there were planned facility levies, there were bonds, and we did have supplemental levies several years ago, but a lot of those things fell through the gaps during transitions and, and we're fighting hard to rebuild that trust in our community so that we can bring it back. COVID obviously disrupted a lot of that and we have to ask our funds, and so there wasn't as much of a need for a few years, but, but I think that we just need to educate our community, clearly communicate with them, and then I also think, to your point, Kathy, where can we make changes in our district? I think our teachers know and I think our administrators know, and I think as we give them opportunities to communicate, creating, creating building leadership teams, creating district leadership teams where they can come together and collaborate on this, and then committing, creating that community connections committee, we'll be able to find those answers and help each other out.
Well, as far as the, the funding changing, the National Department of Education getting shut down, you know, and those federal dollars not coming into our special needs program where the most money per student is spent is a, is a game changer, you know, we can't, by law, we still have to educate those kids and give them those, and provide those services, so that money, money's got to come from somewhere. You know, Elisa is correct, and we, we are the lowest supplemental levy in the whole area, but, you know, I, I, over in Casja County, it's like double or triple of ours, it's double, I think. I spent a lot of time over in Declo, have property over there, so I pay taxes over there, so I don't know. But, you know, so we have to look at that, but I don't think it's necessarily creating new taxes all the time. Getting rid of $50 million in vouchers and putting that money into public education is where we start, because that's unconstitutional in my opinion, it's in the courts, hopefully they'll, they'll agree with me. That's number one. And as far as, as making, I, I consider myself a fiscal conservative, making changes to, you know, be more efficient, I think, one, this is an idea that I floated last, last time we were around, is the consolidation of, of school districts. I mean, you look at Casja County, you know, they have one school district for the entire county, we've got a school district for Castleport, Hagerman, Buell, Piler, all these little towns, each one of them needs an IT guy, superintendent, a business manager, high, high, I guess, high paid jobs, we're, we're only getting paid at the classified level for that, so the, the revenue doesn't match what we're spending on those people, and if you consolidated some of those or if you had some sort of consortium where you're not that same school district, but you have a consortium where you have same IT folks or social service folks, some of those high paying jobs that could go to these smaller schools and work two or three of these school districts, I think would save the school district money.
It's been mentioned a couple times about the levies and bonds, and along with that comes the, you know, the state has tried to allow some things to help with levies, like the property tax relief bill, but it's very confusing and it's a whole separate statute than your school funding. And the way that the law is written, you can't list that property tax relief on the ballot. So things like that make it more difficult to appear transparent. We really are trying to be as transparent as we can, it's just that that statute is very confusing and you have to look at maybe multiple statutes to really understand the full picture. And then, over the four years that I've been on the board, we've bounced back and forth between ADA, which is average daily attendance, and enrollment funding, and it's a well complicated formula either way you look at it, but basically enrollment is how many students do you have enrolled and you're at school, and average daily attendance is how many students were in the seat. And during COVID, they went to enrollment because a lot of people were home because they had to, they had COVID or they had been in contact with someone who had COVID. So it was sort of a way to alleviate some of that funding gap because you, everyone's average daily attendance dropped. And then it went back and forth with how that funding was going to be, so it would be difficult to budget. And it also took away some fun. When they went from, back to ADA after we've been on enrollment, it took some funds away. The state did try to make that right, but it was late. Later than we would have received it, we would just would have been on enrollment. And so those are some of the things and how funding is different. Where we can cut, I think that you rely on your business manager, your superintendent, your staff to give you ideas. And, you know, as a board, you need to listen to those and figure out what makes the most sense for our district.
I could go into a whole bunch of stuff about budgets, but two minutes is not going to do it. One thing you need to know about general fund, that's all local money. And the state also puts stipulations on it, although they did this year, I think, one of the House bills changed it. You used to have to spend four hundred thousand dollars a year, based on your square footage, if that was the Beulah school district. You had to spend on facilities to keep them safe and maintained. And that's part of the money that the state gives you. So you have that money going out. Plus, you have to do what they call a maintenance match for special ed population, which is approximately thirty percent of what you spend for those special ed kids. So it was a fairly large amount. So basically about a quarter of your budget before you even start goes for those sideboards that the state puts in those state funds. And that's just a little bit of the stuff that you have to have. And that's not including any of the federal funds that you receive that they also put stipulations on, a part of the money you have to spend. ADA is a whole different program. That, that thing is based on the population of the school. And it's average daily attendance, which is a weekly aggregate. Not, not an average day every day, it's for the week. And that goes over to fifty-two weeks for basically to the first Friday in November. And then that is paid the next year. It's not paid in the current year, that's paid the next year. So what you did for ADA this year for your funding is paid for next year. If you grow, you don't get that money until the following year. If you shrink, you get the same, it's the same effect. So there's just a whole lot of stuff that a lot of people don't realize that happens.
Thank you all so much. Remember, early voting begins next Monday in County West. Next Monday at eight o'clock, what do you, come in and vote early. I would encourage you to please vote and then bring, get your friends, your neighbors, your families to vote as well. It's very, very important. These folks did a great job tonight. We're thankful for the Beulah chamber as well as Beulah's community. Thank you all for coming out. God bless.